Good, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, September 9th, meeting of the Dayton Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm Ron O'Connor, Chair of the Library Trustees. It's a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. And if you do not wish to participate in a recorded meeting, you may disconnect at this time. Meeting is being conducted via Zoom only this evening. And so we have our we have a member of the trustees here today. So we'll start with the the roll call again, Ron O'Connor, Chair, Library Trustees.
Rita Arugio, trustee.
Okay.
Jocelyn Tavarez, Library Director. We can't hear you, Karen.
We have, we have a guest, Karen, Karen from the Friends and Public Library, and we'll hear from later. If we can begin with the, thank you, Jocelyn, for posting the agenda on, on the screen. We'll begin with the minutes of the joint meeting of the Library Trustees and Board of Selectmen, held on June 6. Can't reach that larger, but I have a, so why don't we start with that?
I don't have any of the minutes prepared from either meeting.
Well, that would be, that would be a good reason for us not to be able to approve them. I'm sorry.
And I, because I would have preferred to have been able to send them to you in advance for you anyway, so. Apologize for that.
No, no worries. I apologize for having assumed that we had them to review and so.
No, no.
We'll move on, we'll move on from that and you, you caught me in that I hadn't, obviously hadn't read them since, you know.
No, no, it could sound the agendas of it.
Yeah.
I intended to.
Sure. That's okay. We will defer that till the, till our next meeting. So the, the first order of all business is update on, on library operations. Let me, let me preface this discussion, which will be led by by Jocelyn Tavarez, the Library Chair, Library Director, but just my, my personal thanks and on behalf of the trustees for the incredible work of the library staff led by Jocelyn in, in the work that Jocelyn's going to talk about now, and then I'll, I'll offer more praise then, but I didn't want to forget to do that. The, the staff have been very busy carrying out a lot of work related to the updates that Jocelyn's working to provide now. And I know I'm speaking like we have an audience here, but no, Jocelyn, I, I will personally thank you, thank you, and, and the, the rest of the staff for the incredible work that you've done in in recent weeks as well as actually since the pandemic began. So go ahead. I'll let you have it provided up.
Excuse me, Ron, this is Rita. I second that. I second what you have said.
Okay. Thank you very much for your.
Like to piggyback on that, the staff have been, they've gone above and beyond to get us where we are today. And additionally, the Highway Department has been above and beyond right from the Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry on down, everybody who has helped us at the Highway Department has just been just incredible with responding to every single need that we have and being cheerful about it and I, I, I can't thank them enough for all of their help from driving to Marlboro to get free shelving to just moving, moving bins and boxes and putting up shelving and just everything that they've done has been, we, we've just, we really appreciate their help. So without, you know, to go on, this was our first week where library operations are at the lower level of Town Hall. We are functional. We're still, still doing a bit of back and forth in between the library and the Town Hall. Lori has been the mainstay staff person at the Town Hall. We've had some families who have visited. All of the holds are being picked up at Town Hall. We our biggest obstacle right now is we still don't have phone service there. So the library, if you're calling from outside, if you're a patron calling the library, it's still ringing at Main Street. So we, there's plenty of work to be done in the library on Main Street. But we, that means that we need to have it staffed for, in order to be accessible to patrons. So right now we are able to maintain continuity of our curbside hours, which were we're, we've we're kind of, I guess it's more of a soft opening. We're doing Monday through Friday, eight to four. And Phyllis and Lisa have agreed to split the location, one person at Town Hall, one person at the library on Saturday from 10 to 2. I found out today, we had a state aid workshop and I was able to talk to the state aid department, for lack of, or consultants at the MBLC that what we're doing there right now is okay. We have to be open 38 weeks at our old schedule. So we actually have a little bit of wiggle room to get our evening hours in place and figure things out. So we, we have a little bit more wiggle room than we anticipated. So I think it'll give us some time to nail down some things. So we'll have a few weeks under our belt at Town Hall. And then we can get a, a night of operation there, and I think we'll be okay there. We are expecting the modular unit. We were anticipating to be there next week. But Mr. Ferry is not able to do that. He just has a lot of earlier in the week, he had, he still had a lot of work of site work in getting the the stairway to the unit settled, the ramp to the unit settled, parking area behind the unit. So there was a bit of work outside the modular unit. And of course, I, I mean, they lost a day with that outdoor work today. They've started putting up shelving in there. So we're moving along. We're hoping to have some things up, hopefully to get in there and move some items in there next week. But we'll play that by ear. But again, we, we do have some unanticipated wiggle room that will help us get to our 38 weeks. So that's where we are now. We, we've done a bit of packing and scanning the collection that will go over to the modular unit. So we're, we're kind of like in a hurry up and wait path right now. So I, I guess we're in as good a shape as we can be. For the most part, there's still some things we can do.
It's, would it be safe to say that, that the patrons have been patient and understanding of the, the current situation and the need for transition?
I would say so. I think, I, I mean, it's hard to I, I don't think patrons love the idea of needing to go to a modular unit. I think the Town Hall looks nice. It's small, but it looks nice. Um. We'll try to do our best to make the modular unit look nice and as comfortable as we can. I think people will enjoy being able to do their own browsing and selecting when it's available. I, people are understanding, you know, people are still requesting things that are packed up and so, you know, we're still trying to find those things and, you know, we, we, we're still operating.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're doing the best we can. I think most people are understanding. I think most people understand that this isn't our choice and are sympathetic with us.
Okay. Can you provide an update on the in-person programming and meetings?
Well, you know, I guess I wanted to ask you
Okay.
all what you thought. I feel like with I, I'm, I have an outdoor program hopefully scheduled. I'm just waiting for all of the approvals to be met for that, for the space. But it would be some yoga classes, like some weekly yoga classes in the next few weeks outdoors. And just with the uptick in Delta cases in the, you know, in the state and the nation, I just wanted to get your thoughts on in-person programming, especially with kids and kids under 12 specifically. Town Hall, the town of Dayton has only encouraged masked visitors in town buildings. It's not a requirement. So I wanted to know if you thought that was something that we should try doing, or if we should try to do as much outdoor programming as we could?
Well, I wonder, do, do you know what other libraries are doing? You know, for example, I was in the CCON library the other night for a program and they I believe they encouraged mask wearing. Don't know that they required it, but they encouraged it for, for an indoor program.
I think the only town nearby that I think, or towns that were, there's only a few towns that have required it. Swansea is requiring it. I think Westport now requires it in municipal buildings. But a lot of municipalities have still encouraged it. Eve Somerset has done some indoor programming. I think people are trying to do as much as they can while the numbers are still reasonable, but school has just started. So I'm just, I just wanted to get your input on I mean, our, our spaces are small, so I'm very mindful of what we should or should not do. I know we can't do it in a module.
Ventilation's probably not ideal, particularly in Town Hall, or is it?
It's probably better than it is in the library, but.
Sure.
I don't know that if we opened the doors, if it would be enough. Just because of the way that the room might be set up with maybe a bookcase or two, or I'll move around some of the, the shelves, not.
But is that room served by the HVAC system? Just something I didn't even pay attention to until.
I would think so, but I don't know that for certain. I would think so.
Well, I think being cautious is important. If you're, we can guess one question is the extent to which the, the library can adopt a policy that's more stringent than that of the town in general. Or whether the, the better decision is to err on the side of caution and not, not have indoor programming until we have time to see the how, how that particular, that, that population of children 12 and under is, is doing in terms of the school setting. Is that, is that what you're thinking, Jocelyn? And Rita, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I was down at Town Hall. I stopped by the other day and it's really nicely set up. And Lori was showing me some of the mobile bookcases they could move to make the area larger, and she had the door open. So again, yeah, it would, you know, I think caution, especially since the kids are going back to school and the younger ones aren't vaccinated, that you know, we just have to be careful.
Is there anything scheduled?
No, no, I just have the outdoor yoga.
Yeah.
And a possible, I, I have, I mentioned it later. But I think I would do it on Zoom. Station sort of program.
Yeah, I, I think given the limitations of our facilities, although this is part of the larger question of access, for example, to the the Old Town Hall space for, for programming in, in which one, one could conceivably have a mass encouragement and have seating six feet apart. Again, that, that was what was what CCON did. And I, actually, that's what, it's also in Somerset. That's used to be the, the, the general approach to programming, at least in the two libraries they can speak to. So I, it sounds like if we want to just put a pause on anything for indoors for September and revisit this at our meeting in October, that, that's fine with me.
All right. All right, that's, that's good.
Yeah, it doesn't preclude, obviously, doing things on Zoom. If, if, you know, if it's something that would work in that format.
And I, I think, I wasn't sure if we would have, I wasn't sure what the condition of the library would be for this. Just because we have stuff everywhere and the packing and stuff.
Sure.
We can try, I mean, we can try to have an in-person meeting in October if you'd like. We can play by ear for that.
Okay. Yeah, and actually another factor, just in doing any kind of programming in, in September, is the fact that staff are out straight and have been. And we should let them settle in in, in the two locations month of September before we even look at indoor programming that would add, add to the the workload of the staff who've just, again, been doing incredible work.
All right.
Okay.
Yep.
Rita, makes sense?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Anything else on, on the library operations, Jocelyn?
No, that's been the big focus of.
Sure.
And
Okay, we'll move on then to an update on the, the hotspots and devices.
We have received the hotspots from the state.
Great.
I'm just waiting to hear about the, I put in, in our grant application, the federal grant application for five laptops, and I'm just waiting to hear if they approve it or not. I'm hopeful because they've just announced more federal funding for more.
Great.
You know, for future grant rounds, so you know, we'll just keep fingers crossed, but I'm sure there are a lot of applicants. So I don't know when to expect to hear anything, but we'll see. And it, the number, the amount was under $2,000. Five laptops.
So I, I don't think we, we talked about this, but it, it just occurred to me. Do these laptops have software installed, or are they more internet devices? And what kind of virus protection and all the kinds of security measures do they?
They, um, they're, they wouldn't have really much of anything installed. I would, we would have to purchase that.
Okay.
I didn't even think of that for the grant, to be honest, but we can purchase, we can, we can get things purchased through there are ways we can take care of that for somewhat affordable.
Yeah, we, we probably want to, I, you, we, we may already have something of the sort in place, but want to look at some security procedures and concerned about viruses and things of that sort.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
You know, what, what the, the expectations would be you know, for running a virus scan when they're, each time they're returned and who's going to do that and how it gets done and but we, we can talk about that in the future. Once we get, we receive them and work on a policy and procedure for that.
Yeah, I, and I have, there's lots of guidance out there for that. For, a lot of libraries do lend laptops or tablets.
Right.
And we can get support from sales on what we need to be, have loaded and so I, I think we'll be we'll be prepared to get them up and running and ready.
Rita, do you have any questions?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Jocelyn. This is a great resource for the community and another example of the important work that we're doing. So next you've got updates on a couple of grants.
The CARES Grant, we've done our last program. So I started work on the final report. I just, I have to chase the new accounting team down to just get some check numbers and things in order to submit that with the MBLC. The ALA Grant, which is the one that's called LTC, I have to hold the program and that I, I think there's so many lightning rod topics that I could have a conversation on in Dayton that I thought we could have some discussion about affordable housing in Dayton and the reforms that could take, especially with all of the housing that is going into Dayton. Like something to talk about there, about the pros of affordable housing with the cons of the development in town and to be able to have a discussion about what that means for the town. And I have one of the one of the new purchases we have is a product called Access Video On Demand. And I thought I would play a clip from one of the videos that talked about housing. And it, it's really quite, it's a few years old, but it's still pretty, it, it's like nothing has changed with housing needs and to get the conversation started. And I just have to set a time and get that going and but I have to do it before the end of October. So that's my plan for that and then we'll be okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that before we move to new business?
Nope.
Okay. Statistics?
Do you see the statistics on your screens?
Not yet, no.
Yeah, okay. Let me go to how about now?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
I can.
Thank you. Okay. Can you give us a quick summary because I can't, I can't read it from this spiral.
Okay.
Close, just have my face on the screen.
So, um. July and August was the start of, I mean, we were still doing curbside service, but we were also, Lori was going to the parks for outreach. So we we have, July's circulation numbers were 2,220 for July, which it's a little bit low compared to like a normal year, but it's much more in line with, we're getting closer to pre-pandemic levels. Not quite, but we're still maybe 400 off from our lowest point, which was in 2018. August was a little bit lower. It was 1,919. And that, that's a little bit lower, but it from this time last year, it was a huge increase. July saw an increase of 61% and August saw an increase of 20%. So hopefully we are on our way. Online resources are they're steady. I just want to point out that we have a few new items that are added and a few things that have gone away. Some of the things that have gone away are the, we're quoted, recorded books had that package. You might remember that Acorn Media, IndieFlix, Great Courses and Hello Concerts. Overdrive purchased those products or intended to. They purchased recorded books. They weren't able to come to an agreement with Acorn Media, but the other products were absorbed by Overdrive. I kept the Great Courses in that product line and got rid of the others. We did see a couple of uses on the Great Courses that aren't reflected here. kept the Great Courses in that product line and got rid of the others. We did see a couple of uses on the Great Courses that aren't reflected here. I've um in place of those products, I've tried a couple of products called Access Video On Demand and Access Video On Demand Just For Kids. The Just Kids product has a lot of Weston Woods titles and some Sesame Street titles and a lots of good kids content. Access Video On Demand has a lot of PBS titles. Like Frontline or um Ken Burns documentaries. A lot of that content. There's some HBO documentaries, um a lot of foreign films. Other um streaming video content. We've also added a product called A to Z Maps, which is a companion to our A to Z World Food, A to Z Food America. The other travel products in that series. And sales is also looking at Canopy, which is another, I'm sorry, that's my dog. Is another um streaming video service that looks at or that looks at feature films. So um those are a few of the things that I'm exploring with um those items. So it's um, you know, we're looking at those options to try to bring back a streaming media presence to patrons, so.
Good. Good, thank you. Yeah, I I think, you know, we have reasonable expectations. And um uh it's a kudos to um Laurie for her um Library in the Park work this summer. I had the opportunity to see her in a couple of locations and she talked with me a bit about particularly the School Street location, how she has, you know, regular uh patrons, families who are um who are aware that she's going to be there, I think on Fridays and um come out and take out some books. So it's a, it's a good thing. It's good to see that that succeeding in Friday.
Yeah, that that was a, that was a really good um partnership with the Parks and Recs Department. And um she had a very, also a very successful book group on Fridays with preteen and teen, younger teen boys that was really successful. I think if we were going to do an in person program, that might be the one that she would want to keep keep going with that because she has some momentum built with that group.
Great. Okay, um. Uh, move on to uh payroll?
I just, um, I'm looking for someone to come and sign the payroll and bills for tomorrow.
Okay, I can um probably do that early afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, like, let's say between I don't know, around one o'clock, I would say.
Okay.
I can do that. And the same thing with the bills, payroll and bills, or is there something special about the bills? That it's on the agenda?
I don't know, just that I wanted to mention it.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I'll take care of that tomorrow. Yeah, I might have Ann come down and pick it up, but I'm working tomorrow afternoon. But I'll be home. So next is.
Ron, you're running into trouble. I'm available. I can come down up until 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, so.
Okay.
Let me know.
Yeah, I'm I'm probably just going to drop by because we're we're going to be out until um 12:30, 1 o'clock. So I might just swing by around one. And so the draft letter to Ms. Ali?
I don't have um the response written, of course, because um, you know, we've been running around, but
Sure.
I'm gonna lose sight of it. So I just wanted to put it on here as a reminder.
Okay.
That we owe her one and um she did meet with Mr. Hall in her home for quite a while, though.
Okay.
About issues that she raised in her letter about um her concerns about library service being impacted in the ways that they have over the last year or so and not wanting the next year. Her concerns about the next year and all the issues going forward.
Okay.
Being the town.
Sure. All right. Is this letter something you need the trustees to approve or?
I wouldn't want to just send it willy nilly now.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Happy to take a look at it and if we need to meet and vote on it. And do that, you know, before our next meeting if if that's helpful to you, and it's certainly understandable um.
Probably sign it.
I think you've been rather busy lately, safe to say. So we we want a, you know, very um a strong response to her and um take, you know, take due time to get that done. Uh, so, thank you. Um, is there anybody else on this in this Zoom meeting who might have um input before we move on to the Friends update? Is there anybody else on here, Jocelyn?
I'd like to introduce Pat Gales had come in to the meeting as well.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, what's the status for our present library for the Carnegie Building?
Repairs will be made to the building. So I don't know when they plan to be to start. I know that the town administrator is expecting to receive the drawings from the architect. I thought last I knew within the next few weeks. But I don't know when the actual, the work, I think they expect a lot of the work can be done in house. The Highway Department is awfully busy. So I don't know when they will have a chance to start the work. I can't imagine all of the work can be done by them, just it's a lot of work.
So right now, nothing can be done until you get those plans from the architect, though.
I, right, right.
Okay, just wondering, thank you.
I also, um, we have to move, we have to do a lot of work inside to move stuff. So we have to, we still have to empty out the lower level. We have a lot of stuff occupy, like we have to move those books upstairs and we still have a lot of stuff upstairs that is taking room. So there's a lot of stuff that we need to do to clear that space and there.
That's good to understand that, you know, knowing where it's at and that's moving, you know. You know, granted, it'd take a while to move things from one level to the other and sort it through. So, yeah, that's understandable.
Okay. Yeah. You're welcome.
Good. Thank you. Um next item on the agenda is a special meeting of the Friends coming up.
Yep, next Thursday, there's a special meeting. Um I don't know if you want to talk about it, Karen, or?
Well, I think one of the things on the agenda.
Can you speak up, though, because we're?
Yeah, can you hear me now if I talk louder?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, um, I I think the idea is is for us, what can we do to support the library at this point? Um, what would you like us to be, you know, to do? Um, you know, we were thinking certainly of advocacy for the library and make sure, you know, that it's in people's minds that this is a temporary condition. It it's not a permanent solution. So there certainly are some ideas that we have. I mean, there's a lot of good things going on and making sure that everything that that is working really well, pictures certainly posted, you know. Um, you know, I think in the meeting, we need to talk about, you know, an idea I had of making a video um where people who are supportive of the library, you know, could, you know, tell what they find useful for the library and what they would like to see. And so that's about it. What about you, Pat?
Part of the Friends group, it's important that um there is advocacy, you know, for the library because it's such an important piece of our community and always has been. Um, it has a significant history in our community, too. So um I agree with Karen, like, you know, it's kind of like, what can we do to keep the positive stuff in people's mind, like the reasons why um we use a library and why it's important to us. And so, you know, certainly to help support um the staff and the trustees as we go through this process.
Okay, thank, thank you both. And thank you to the Friends for for all your support in the past and, you know, during the during the current situation, we'll appreciate any support you can provide. We we can see if we're gonna, when is it next Thursday evening, the meeting? The Friends meeting?
Yes.
Okay, but would it be helpful? Or would you, would you like to have a member of the trustees there?
It's up to you. I mean, we certainly would welcome you if you would like to attend.
I agree.
It um reminds me, Jocelyn, that uh the Selectment are meeting next Wednesday, the 15th. And um I don't know if there'll be discussion about the library there, but do we need to post the trustees, just in case there is, if you can check with Mike on that, maybe just get it on. Just get it posted as a trustees meeting, because I think that was part of the plan when I spoke with um Mr. Mullin, Town Administrator. Briefly about the agenda for the 15th.
All right, I can, I'll check with him.
Yeah.
I'm not able to attend that night, though.
Okay. Okay, well, then maybe he, yeah, it would be important for you to be part of any discussion, so. Yeah, I I don't think it makes sense. First, have a discussion about the the library operations without you there.
I I have open house that night, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's that's fine. We can um we'll just, we'll just plan, let's, you know, we've been having, well, we had one, one special joint meeting. And, you know, maybe we need to have another one of those. Um and so if we could look into that. Jocelyn, and and again, a lot of this is around your needs as the library director and the needs of staff and patrons of the Friends to um see if we need to kind of check in um with town leadership about next steps and how things are going. I I think, again, to just echo comments earlier, things are going incredibly well. Staff, library staff are doing um remarkable work and and thank you for acknowledging the work of um the the Highway Department under the leadership of Tom Ferry. It's um, I, there are days when I think uh you folks have clones, both the library staff and the and the Highway Department, because uh it's just amazing amount of work that's getting done. And there's a lot of other things that the Highway Department can can do and actually is doing uh concurrently with this. So um I'll echo your your tribute to their their incredible work uh in support of the library and uh as well as uh Building Commissioner uh Jim Maggiar and of course, Town Administrator uh Mike Mullin. So um hats off again to the library staff for all you're doing. Anything else on the agenda here? I think I just see um just an update on the yoga program, which you've already talked about, but feel free to say more if you need to.
I'm hoping to start it on Tuesday. Um, I don't have a calendar, but a couple of Tuesdays from now for it's that would be five o'clock to 6:15 in the little yard area behind the modular. Kind of between, I guess, parking and where the community garden would be. And it would be for four or five weeks while the weather is still good. Fingers crossed the weather is still good. Um so.
Okay. Any, anything else?
No, but if anyone has any questions, just let me know.
Okay. And and can you just remind anybody who's watching the recording of this um meeting? As you stated at the beginning about, or or maybe people will join late, about contacting the library by phone. Uh, you could just remind people how that works right now.
Oh, sure. Um, when you call the library right now on September 9th, you're actually the Main Street location. Although we're operating as much as we can out of um the lower level of Town Hall. So things, there might be a little delay with things and we'll explain that to you over the phone. We'll try, we'll try to make your experience as easy as possible. But um
We we still have staff answering the phone at Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As best we can, you know, we're trying to staff both places and I mean, we have to. There's not a lot of room out of Town Hall.
Yeah.
We're for everyone to be staffed there and there's plenty to do at Main Street, so.
Yep. Now, is the library open on Saturdays? Now that we're after Labor Day, are we still keeping it Monday through Friday?
Oh, no, 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 we're, we're still on Saturday.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Lisa, I think Lisa will be at Town Hall and Phyllis will be at Main Street.
Okay.
Saturday, so.
All right.
So Jocelyn, I have seen on Facebook people asking if they knew the library hours. So is it correct, it's eight to four Monday through Friday? And then 10 to two on Saturdays?
Um, right now it is.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Uh, there's no further business. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
This is Rita. I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Uh, Ron O'Connor stepping out his chair, seconding the motion. All in favor, say aye and state your name.
Aye, Rita Rougeau.
Aye, Ron O'Connor, motion to adjourn passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.